I call a regular city council meeting, back to order, at 6:00 PM. Earlier, we entered a closed session. During that closed session, we received a report on labor negotiations. We merged with two motions. First, carried four to zero to reclassify our public utilities supervisor position. The second, to authorize the city manager to execute the MOU with the union to include a twenty-year longevity pay increase of 2.5% for city employees working with us longer than twenty years. This one carried three to one. At this point in time, we're at item seven, special presentations and announcements. It's my joy today as vice mayor, chair of the meeting. Our mayor, Casey, could not be here. So I'm pleased to welcome both the oldest citizen living in Dunsmere and longest continuously residing citizen of Dunsmere here. Please feel presented with peace. Are they here present?
Steven Bryan, director of the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, regional director for South Siskiyou County. I'm here with Karen O'Quinn, the executive director of the Dunsmere Library. Councilmember Keisler and Joyce are here representing Rotary. I am the head of the Dunsmere Community Care Team, and we put together this annual event, hopefully it'll become an annual event. We were looking for the oldest living residing resident in Dunsmere, and we found her. Her name is Pat McEwen. And Pat is eighty-nine years old. She was born January fourth, nineteen thirty. She moved to Dunsmere in nineteen forty when she was ten years old. She's been a housewife. She's raised two wonderful children. Her daughter Gail is present here tonight. Gail, I believe, lives in Castella. And Pat worked for the movie theater here in Dunsmere. She sold candy and was an usher. Her husband and her dad both worked for the railroad. And so we're just very honored that Pat would join us and come out tonight so we could celebrate her. We have a couple gifts for her. Not that you're all, not that you're looking for more stuff, but we would love, we put this special package together for you. And together with the Dunsmere Lotterians, we're giving Pat two dollars for every year that she's been alive. So I have a check for a hundred and seventy-eight dollars for Pat.
Also, the Dunsmere Library making a plaque for Pat. They're gonna put on the wall to honor her. I know there's a little debate about the hundred and ten years. We went off of the hundred and ten years because that's the, Dunsmere was incorporated in nineteen oh nine. That's where the hundred and ten years came from.
Here's the mayor's.
Bravo!
I'm pleased to present you with the key to the city.
Can you give to see if you would?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that both of them at the same time?
Yeah, so we're together. It's a two-part contest. The oldest resident in Dunsmere.
She got, she got a double, double whammy right there with what?
She covered the whole.
What's she here on?
Yay!
David Rafferty.
Commissioner. You find my act. Hey, Steven. Keep doing stuff like this. Good job.
Thank you.
Look, you bet.
Yay!
It was a group effort, so it's a whole peer team. Well, let's now proceed to public comments. This is where you have the opportunity to come up and present any public comments on matters not on the agenda.
Could I please make one special for those who are not aware? Todd, you host your new city manager starting Monday. He's in the audience.
Please stand up.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also follow up that announcement by telling everyone that our interim city manager's last day will be tomorrow. I'd like to give him a round of applause. He's been, in this third round as interim city manager, a great stabilizing presence to the city of Dunsmere. And I would like to present him on the top. With the key to the city.
Yay! Yay!
If you don't use it, you're a free seller. You just gotta lock it that way out.
Cute.
This should be my third one.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, let's proceed to general public comment. So to remind everyone, you'll be given, come to the podium, say your name and address. And you have three minutes to express your comment. The things on the agenda are check by registry, authorize city manager to execute beer and wine license for an event. We have a public hearing later regarding fog ordinance and review of community promotions funding request. So if it's on these topics or related to staff or committee reports, it'll be dealt with later. This is just any general comment you may have at the time. All right, thank you.
Linda Shaven, forty-nine twenty-five Masson Avenue. And I just wanted to let everybody know about the green waste drop-off day that we're doing this Saturday at the Dunsmere City Ballpark. I wanted to thank Randy, our interim city manager, for helping us make that happen.
You're wrong.
Oh, you want it on committee reports?
No, you're wrong. It's not this Saturday.
Oh, next Saturday, August twenty-fourth. My apologies. And as chair of the Disaster Planning Advisory Committee, we look forward to working with you, Todd. And I will leave these here for folks to pick up. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Linda, are you speaking?
Yes.
Mario Rubino, here as treasurer of the city of Dunsmere Council. There's about $288,000 in the checking account right now and about $117,000 in late. There's cash flow involved in that. The city finance director believes there's about $360,000 in reserve. Our auditor, our finance manager, and many other cities have recommended a minimum of a twenty percent to twenty-five percent reserve. And with a $17,000 deficit budget and some bumping up of what we think is gonna come in next year, about $20,000. So this is a time to watch every dollar. We really don't wanna drop below that twenty percent reserve. I know there are a lot of requests in front of council for monies for all kinds of things. But your first and foremost responsibility to the citizens of Dunsmere is that corporation that solve it. And secondly, to the employees of the city of Dunsmere to make sure they're all gonna get their paychecks. So we need to keep and maintain a reserve, and we need to be very careful and very judicious with the money that we have left. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any further public comment?
Hi, I'm Paris Petrick of Chester Avenue, and I am with the Siskiyou Media Council, which hosts both YCTV Channel Four and MCTV Channel Fifteen. And I'm here to tell you that we will soon be up and running online. That means everyone will be able to watch things like this city council meeting via their phone, their smart TV Roku, or on our website at siskiumedia council dot org. With that in mind, the Siskiyou Media Council is here to announce its current plan, which will benefit the entire Siskiyou community. As we live within a vast rural county, there is a serious need for local news coverage. That's where the SMC comes in. Inside Siskiyou, real news, real people, real close. An SMC-produced monthly news show created by the people for the people of each individual outlined town. Happy Camp, Fort Jones, Doris, Etna, Dunsmere, Mount Chastel, Weed, McLeod, Wayrica, on and on. Ultimately, uniting Siskiyou County via its people and their grassroots information. Each episode could feature local news, current events, interviews with the mayor, city council members, county supervisors, and of course, getting the word out about their upcoming events. And as interest develops and it becomes successful, there is serious potential for growth. Perhaps even creating a show bimonthly, weekly, or dare we dream, daily. Currently, there are many financially supported Siskiyou agencies that offer a barrage of tourism information. But the natives of the county need more. We need more local information, more inclusiveness. After all, we're not tourists. We are the people who live and work in Siskiyou County, and we don't need to be sold to travel here to enjoy its beauty. We live it. So we are asking you, you, to join us and help bring the news of the people to the people it matters most. The only way to make this happen and happen quickly is with your help. So if you know someone in your area who would be interested in being a vital part of the SMC network, please have them contact us immediately. It's time to get the word out. We are the platform for the people, of the people, and by the people of Siskiyou County. This is the new public access. We are the Siskiyou Media Council, your access to community. Thank you.
Carolyn Rivard, fifty-five twenty-six Dunsmere Avenue. I'm just here to make a heads-up announcement. I and a few of the citizens of Dunsmere are going to have a pie social. We have contacted the county. We have found a site. What I need are bakers and servers. I'm having my first committee meeting tomorrow at the Pizza Parlor at five o'clock if there's anyone that would like to come join us. If you have any questions, you can ask me. This is our first try, so we wanna make it successful so that we can have it year after year. And my purpose is to raise money for our chamber. We are in desperate needs. I am also raffling off a couple of quilts, and that money will also go to the chamber. So if there's any questions, just give me a call. Thank you.
If I cheat and ask the Nolan Bakery to make six pies for your event, is that okay?
That's fine with me. We need pies.
Thank you so much.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry, twenty-first of September, which is a Saturday, it's gonna be a one-day thing. And Steve, it's at your place.
Twenty-first, Dunsmere Community Resource Center. Hope to see you all there.
Yay!
Put more flyers.
For committee is tomorrow at Pizza Parlor at five PM. Thank you.
Nathaniel Woods, forty-one hundred Pine Street. Is cannabis part of the staff report or community reports today? Okay. So I am a applicant for commercial cannabis in the city of Dunsmere, and I have completed almost everything, pending a few contingencies on my application. And I know the torch is being passed through city managers, and so I just wanted to come tonight to make a request that a motion be made that I receive a temporary permit on until the contingencies are on the city manager's list are met. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Is there any further public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will proceed with staff and council reports. City manager, can you report?
Yeah, I'll report on the July statistics. So for the month of July, we had a total just under five hundred and twenty hours of patrol, active patrol.
Excuse me, Ben. Do you guys need help? You got it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you again.
Thank you for.
The sheriff, it's nice meeting you.
Yay!
Sheriff, is there a light in place? Is there a insurance?
Okay, yeah, just under five hundred and twenty hours of patrol. So we had a hundred and eighty-six calls for service in the city of Dunsmere last month. We pulled twelve cases, made twenty traffic stops, drove fourteen citations, five arrests, one of which was felony for misdemeanors. We had a felony criminal threats arrest on Dunsmere Avenue, two misdemeanor arrests for possession of drug paraphernalia and warrants on Dunsmere Avenue. We had a misdemeanor theft at Chevron and an arrest for violation of probation. We did take one burglary and one petty theft, one assault and battery, one vandalism. We had eleven trespassing complaints and about fourteen disturbing police calls. The only other comment I can make is I attended the active shooter training that was hosted by the Dunsmere High School early in the month of July. It was attended by all law enforcement agencies in the county, I believe. And CHP was one who put on the training, did a very good job with it. It was a high turnout. And I just wanna extend appreciation to the Dunsmere High School for allowing us to use their facility for us. So it was a very good training, very informative, and I think very helpful.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Ben, a few questions. What was your score? What was your score, come on?
For what?
The shooting.
So that's something different. We did like an active shooter response, and it was, you know, Dr. Ben, an active shooter that.
Okay, okay, that's different.
Yeah, that's different, yeah.
The other thing I wanna ask is, on the scene, there was assault and battery. Is that person okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Finance director?
Look, can I ask one question? That pepper will hardly anything. At the airport, there is a Dunsmere rod and gun club with a shooting range. Does the sheriff or any of the police departments in Siskiyou, where do you take your shooting training?
We, the sheriff's office has their own shooting range. It's out in Guzzell. And yeah, the other agencies use our facility.
Thank you so much. Finance director, do you have anything to add? Councilman Deutsch?
Yes, I wanted to take this opportunity with the excitement coming up about the green waste pickup that we're gonna have. With Paris mentioning Siskiyou Media Council, I talked with her about this. I'd like to invite both Mr. Arf and Ms. Shaven to get together with Paris and do a video explaining clearly what's going on, why it's going on. I hope, Peter, that you've been pushing this, so I thought I'd give you the opportunity to stand up and share. Are you all interested?
Certainly. No, anything we can do to build on what our citizens group has done.
Okay, so Linda's up here with you?
Yes, and I just might add that we get a real expert in tourist street to join us, who could be real specific.
Whatever you wanna do. I just wanna make sure we get that taken care of before the thing so we can do that. Paris has decided to.
I wanna check with Josh.
You know, the other thing I have is neighborhood watch is just to say that we had another small meeting, but we're reaching out. We're gonna be putting flyers around the city. We're updating the Facebook page with a cover photo I just sent off. I just created one, so we have that happening. What we need is to get people from each of the different areas, and if you look up here at the map up here, we're pretty well taken care of. Two, three, and four, which is downtown. Six is the first one. They've got the furthest. They've gone the furthest. But what we need is just who are the people in each of those areas? The social ones that would gather other people together, that would be willing to go off and knock on doors and get information and find out who needs help. So the meetings are every second Thursday at six o'clock right here. And I encourage everyone at this time, especially with fire season still amongst us, to make an effort to try and get us covered on each of our different neighborhoods so we can start doing some good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arf.
Just one announcement directed at all the city manager, you has. The Business Meets the New City Manager event is now gonna move to Monday, September sixteenth. The sponsors of the event are gonna be Madalena's, the Dunsmere Brewery Works, Mossbury Hotel, Moms Away LLC. It's gonna be a two-hour event. We're gonna have a panel with business owners for part of it to try to talk about what it's like in the economy we have and the dreams for the economy they want to see. We may have some live music. We'll certainly have beer and wine and hors d'oeuvres.
Where went he?
This is going to be September the sixteenth. Linda Price and I will be putting out the flyers next week. It's an afternoon event with, for better or for worse, many of the businesses in Dunsmere are closed. And my hope is that on mayor, we'll introduce you. You'll talk a little bit, and then we'll have the panel. If you stay for the rest of the meeting, you'll hear a lot about our Chamber of Commerce and how we affect its ears. But we thank you in advance for committing participation.
I'm looking for it.
Is there a time?
I think it's four to six, but it's a little, and where? At lot. Okay, that's where I'll try to get it.
As you said, the flyers will be out this coming week. Right, Councilman Hasler?
Joey Allen's. Got a few. First of all, again, I wanna commend Steven coming up with that idea about, you know, showing respect and appreciation to a fellow Dunsmereite. See, I'll say Dunsmere, I see Dunsmere. Yeah, he's a man. So, thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that this Saturday from eight to two, I'm gonna, once again, be having a yard sale. Everything that we, every dollar we make goes to the Friends of the Pool. In turn, that money is used for pool bucks slash new gear, safety gear for our lifeguards. We got top-notch lifeguards. We need to have, they need to have the top-notch gear. So that's, that's what's more than the effort there is. I wanna commend the people with the fighting. Come up, we got a green waste, and I cordially invite everybody to participate in it. This is a chance when we get rid of all the stuff around our house, try to make our houses, what's the word I learned before?
Fire safe?
Fire safe. Debris-free. Get rid of all the stuff. Bring it down. Now's your chance to do it. I would also like to, I will be personally out there for the parking lot volunteering, loading trash cans if they'll let me. I would like to reiterate, Ms. Caroline says she's gonna have a pie social. I've had one of her pies. I'll be there. If you ain't never had one of her pies.
That one.
So fortunately, she said it was on the twenty-first of September, and she's going to have servers and looking for pie. That's a good event. The money's gonna go to the chambers. I'm all aboard. Good, good looking. The Brew Fest was pretty successful then. I happen to know that twenty-three hundred dollars in raffle tickets was sold, and that money was used, will be used for our kids' scholarships and things for kids. And we had a good job. I'd like to remind everybody that on Thursdays, it's the farmer's market out here. These are our people selling their stuff in our town to us. We should be a little more supportive of that. So I cordially invite y'all to go up there, check out some of the stuff. I know it's a farmer's market, but I saw some cool jewelry today. They got, they got some off-the-hook stuff, and I was surprised. So I'm trying to pass it on. Check it out, you guys. It's, it's right there. Last but not least, well, not last but not least, but we have a steampunk event coming up. Somebody can shop me a date?
Twenty-first, twenty-second September.
September twenty-first and twenty-second is gonna be Dunsmere's first annual steampunk event. It looks pretty cool. We're gonna manage to pull this off, and if you guys wanna get more involved, you can get ahold of myself, Sammy Foreman, Richard Dinges, or Bruce Doitz through you into the flesh like that. So we're trying to make this a really big, neat event. We were looking for ideas. We're looking for help. And we're looking for like items, things that we can use to display to show off steampunk. So if you've got any kind of conception better than what I do, please help us out. Help us make this a great event.
We can meet later and discuss.
And then, last but not least, three times we asked for help. And three times, they said no problem. So, once again, we asked them all, give me a hand, Randy Johnson, as we see him by. And the shift changes, hands. So, Randy, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Any other question for you? Did something change in your family? Something great happen in your family?
Well, yeah, I had a great granddaughter.
Yay!
My share is baby.
So Big Davis, no longer Big Baby's great day.
Oh, no, no, no. Don't sit on the ice.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Councilor, can we move on to committee reports?
Well, I, I had committed at the last council meeting to get together with Councilmember Keisler for a warm-up meeting of the Public Works Committee, but now I think the right thing to do is wait until a time.
Absolutely. I would concur with that, Senator.
Any other committee reports? No. The Finance Committee did meet last Wednesday and briefly considered best means of proceeding with the city council's directive to move forward with putting to vote the increase of TUT in our city by one percent. And afterwards extensively considered all community promotions funding requests, applications. It was an opportunity for everyone involved to come forward. We had enough time there and space for them to have their say. And I have to just say, it was humbling to see the number of people who are committed to pure volunteerism, hours, the personal investment to make Dunsmere a better place. I'd just like to say that I was deeply appreciative of being able to observe that. And I really enjoyed the opportunity to understand this program's better. It's gonna be ended tonight, so we'll hear more about that, but the Finance Committee was not.
Well, and big thanks to our two citizen members.
Yes.
Who have very little orientation around the budget we're trying to adopt and the new concepts from increasing the TUT to a two-year budget to community enhancement grants. And they did their homework, and they were honest brokers, and I think they went a long way in starting to restore trust in city government.
Yeah, in addition, with the full committee meeting for the first time with the five members, it was beautiful. It was a very democratic thing. One of the pure examples of democracy I've experienced. As you can see when we get the report later, that decisions made there were all considerate, and it wasn't one way or another. It was a combination occurred in the voting and the construction on that. So we'll have more on that later. Are there any other committee reports? All right. And with that, the chair will now entertain approval of the minutes for August first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the August first, two thousand nineteen meeting. Second?
There's a motion to approve the minutes in the second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Now we move forward to the consent agenda. This is for items due to be of general consent. Item A. Item A, approval of check register for the last two weeks. authorized city manager to execute ABC beer and wine license for Chamber of Commerce to provide beer and wine sales September 21st and 22nd, 2019, as part of Steampunk Festival in downtown Dunsmere.
Heck, yeah, I made a motion to consent, to adopt consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, one question. I, I don't understand why the city and the chamber are involved in this event. I mean, the chamber is a nonprofit. It seems like they would go to the ABC for a permit, and that would be the end of it.
That is exactly what happened. The ABC then applied, notifies the city and asks the city has an objection, so basically saying at this point in time, the city doesn't object to the Chamber gig in ABC offices. Please agree.
All right. Any more discussion? I'm going to trade that. All right, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass is four zero. We'll move on to our public hearing for the evening. This will be the second reading and adoption ordinance 562, providing implementation, administration, and enforcement of fats, oils, and grease source control program, or FOB. Is there any public comment at this point on our FOB ordinance as proposed? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to read and adopt the ordinance. Move by title only.
Does anybody have the purpose?
I'm looking for it in here.
All right. Can somebody give me a page? Page 10?
Yeah, let's hear it. I've got it here. I move to read ordinance number 562 by title and number only. This must be, and then, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Do we need to adopt it now, too?
The purpose, I'm sorry. The purpose of this ordinance, as well explained in the documents included in your agenda package, is basically the state water board requires the city have a fats, oils, and grease detection ordinance. We had one, there was a couple sentences long before. This obviously is a lot longer. It was prepared by your city engineer, put into ordinance format by a city staff. Without this, you probably won't be able to be successful in getting your wastewater grants that you have applied for, one for the treatment plant and one for improving the system by doing an INI program. So this is state law. Highly recommended that this go forward.
Call the board on the first meeting. We have, we have other commentary?
We did. All right.
So do I have to read that?
No, no, call the board, call the board on the first motion, and now I can second.
All right, so we've got a motion to move to read ordinance number 562 by title and number only. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve second reading.
You need to read it by title.
I do, yeah.
Should I read it?
No, I didn't need to read it. The ordinance of City Council of the City of Dunsmere, California, providing for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of fats, oils, and grease source control program. All right.
Okay. Now.
Now, is there a motion?
I move to approve second reading and adoption ordinance number 562, providing for implementation, administration, and enforcement of fats, oils, and grease source control program.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May? Session? Motion carries?
Good. Thank you very much. Do I think a comment is required by the officers? I'm glad we're doing this even without the compulsion of the state saying, if you don't do it, you're not going to get money from this. But I do want to give a shout out to both the Wheelhouse and the Community Garden. The Wheelhouse, all of their cooking oil never comes close to the sewage stream. They have a vendor that comes and picks up all their used cooking oil and fats and recycles it and provide food. We need to support that. This is going to hit the restaurants in Dunsmere hardest of all, and the more we can do to support never putting the FOB down the drain is a good thing. The state correspondence, the second thing between after oil and grease is putting green waste down the drain. That's a problem, too. The Community Garden has started a very small green waste compost program, the restaurants right across the street, bring over their green waste to the gardens and get composted. That's a good thing. We need to support that.
Thank you so much.
You made the garden, so, yeah.
All right. Now we move on to item 14, Old Business. The one item in Old Business, the review of community promotions funding request, recommendations from Finance Committee, and approve or amend fund requests for 2019, 2020 budget.
I'll wait for me.
Thank you. Previously, the City Council approved a process for dealing with this year's community promotion funding. That process was to refer all applications to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee held hearings on all applications. The results of those hearings are included in your packet, along with the original applications. The purpose tonight is for the council to have that final attempt to actually approve appropriations and council seats for all of these applications. If you happen to answer any questions you have?
Yeah, are there any clarifying questions at this point? We'll have discussion further down the road.
No, and thank you for doing the recap. Very helpful.
Any other question?
I'll...
Are there clarifying questions?
I will say that I myself personally feel nervous that we're about to do this without a full council.
Well, I commend you for that nervousness. However, it was the mayor's wish.
Thank you for my nervousness.
With the mayor's request...
Do you have that in the notes? I want to make sure.
It was our mayor's request that we proceed forward. If we can find a consensus among the four of us, she believed it was too important a matter for the organizations involved, we thought another two weeks. That being said, if we find ourselves at two, two disagreement, this will be postponed until further council meeting, because if we don't build a consensus among ourselves here, then we will, we will require the full council to determine.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Time for clarifying questions. I would now invite members of the public for public comment on this item. You come forward, give your name, address, and you have three minutes to make your comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, Tim Holt, 6235 Hill Street. I think I can speak for the Friends of the Library Board in saying that we are satisfied with the decision of the Finance Committee to grant the library a little less than what we requested, 22, 22.5, which, on the other hand, is $2,500 more than we were granted last year. So, and we recognize that that reflects some of the relatively strict financial circumstances the city is facing. The only other thing I will say very briefly is, and I keep reminding you, that if our library had not faced its own severe financial crisis eight years ago, when the county cut off all funding for the branch libraries, there would not be any TUT money to even talk about right now. That measure would not have gone on the ballot. Other than that, I'll just add that this is, this TUT grant is a very, very important source of funding for the library, amount to treasuries, I don't have the exact figures for you, but it does amount to somewhere between 80 and 90% of our total budget. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You need music?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Gregory is administrator for the Recreation District in Dunsmere. I just wanted to give a big shout out to the committee last week. It was very informative, very difficult. The district does appreciate the support of our district and our pool. We're having a great season. We're going to finish up next week, and our guards are super excited to come back next year. And I just wanted to let the committee know that this investment of our pool is huge. Thanks to a lot of people that were able to get our guards certified, get the pool open. We have expenses, and I would prefer that the council to approve those requested last week. And just a big thank you to the city for being a partner and helping us bring back the pool to the city of Dunsmere and to the county. We had a lot of visitors this last week, and we're going to go out with a bang. We're having a free swim day on Saturday. A lot of the merchants are going to kick in some raffle prizes, and to me, that shows how important this facility is for us here in Dunsmere. So again, thank you for your support, and I look forward to working with the city on a continued basis. So, thank you.
You said something about pool party for the community this Saturday? What time?
Hang on a second. Let me get my marbles together here. Yeah, Saturday is our last date. This week, because school's starting, we're doing something new. We're not canceling swimming, we're having late afternoon, four to six, and we're having a free swim from one to four on Saturday.
Saturday the 24th, correct?
No, this, yeah, 24th.
24th, so it's not this Saturday.
Everything is happening on the 24th.
Yeah, it's not this Saturday.
Yeah, not this Saturday. This is our last full week of operations.
So bring your trash down and jump in the pool.
You, Dave, you can. You can show them how to dive, too.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, thanks again. I appreciate the support, and this is really going to help us get over the top, and we are going to have some other meetings with our community members, Friends of the Pool, by keeping the momentum going even in the off-season. It's so important to us and for the youth and for the families. A lot of good comments, and we're just thankful that we're able to get it done. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Hello, I'm Cindy Foreman. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for approving $10,000 for the Chamber to help us move forward this year. But I would also ask we would reconsider to the $15,000 that we originally asked for. The Chamber is very important to this town. We're a part of bringing money into the town and bringing people into our businesses, and so our businesses flourish, our town in general flourishes because we do advertising, we help promote events, we carry the insurance for all the events to take place. We're very instrumental in the energy that is generated in this town. I've been a Chamber member, I mean, on the board since probably about nine months now, and I've kind of observed what's going on in our town with our Chamber. And I, first of all, want to say I know there's been some disconnect here with some of the businesses regarding the Chamber. I want to be part of healing that and moving forward and making sure all of our businesses are involved and part of putting the events forward. We're in a critical time right now in our Chamber. We've lost our executive director and our bookkeeper. It's pretty much run by nothing but volunteers, myself being one. I have no coin in this. I have no business in this town, but I love my town. And so therefore, I always want to give back to my community, and so I'm involved. But I would not stand before you here tonight and ask for something that I did not feel was necessary. And I feel like it's necessary that we get this money at this particular time. We're going to do things differently. Hopefully, we're going to move forward in a better manner, include, make sure more businesses are included. But in order to do that and to bring more events to town like the steampunk, we didn't even have any money to do that with. But I went around to businesses in town, and our little businesses can't afford to donate much, but they would give $50 here, $100 there. And then, just recently, we just got a big donation so we can put the event on, but we had no money. So this is very important to our town, so please reconsider, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is something that Leman wrote a note, our president, so I'm going to pass it out.
Yes, you give it to...
Thank you. Hello, Stephen Bryan with the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I spent several hours here with the Finance Committee last week. I thought there was a lot of great discussions. I want to thank everybody involved. I also want to make sure that I put in my two cents that budgets are a statement of value. The Dunsmere Community Resource Center does a lot for the community and for Siskiyou County. I know there were comments last week about, we bring in a lot of people from outside the area to here, and that's all the more reason why you should support the Dunsmere Resource Center. The city's never helped with funds to support us, but with, with extra funding, we could do a whole lot more. We've served almost 4,000 people last year, and we'd like to serve even more and be the, be the concrete support of need for those that need it the most. So I just wanted to say thank you for the, the time and effort that's been put into the, the negotiations and the discussions around the TUT. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any further public comment? All right. Seeing none. Chair proposes we take a five-minute reset reconvene at 7:00 p.m.
You want to give the chair?
I call the regular meeting of City Council by after-order at 7:05 p.m. We'll now continue with our discussion of item 14A, Old Business, community promotion funding requests, and recommendations from the Finance Committee. Vice Mayor, actually, continue? Oh, I'm sorry. So the recommendation from the Finance Committee, could we have staff just read out what the recommendations are relative to the original request announced, so that that's...
We can see that again, Laura.
Could you read the recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The recommendations from the Finance Committee are $2,403 for the Christmas Chamber Committee. They had applied for a lesser amount than the monthly year project. $9.73. And the committee recommended to do the money all at once so the project could be done all at once. This is for the Christmas decorations in the downtown. Dunsmere Awards Dinner, $700. Dunsmere Farmers Market, $300. Dunsmere Railroad Days, $2,000. Dunsmere Botanical Gardens, $0. Community Resource Center, $5,000. Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce, $10,000. Friends of the Library, $22,500. Dunsmere Parks and Recreation District, $22,500.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there any clarifying questions on the Finance Committee recommendation at this point? I'm just clarifying, like, what, what number represents what the original number was. I understand you've got your discussion up the end.
No. No, I don't have a question that way.
Okay. Councilor, all right?
I want, no, no questions.
No clarifying questions? All right. Well then, if there are no further clarifying questions, I propose we entertain all items here that are not acceptable to any member here. We can select out and discuss them individually, so we can perhaps build consensus on the items that are amenable to all here. Is there any items that any council member here would wish to discuss further?
Chamber, and I also looked around with a copy of the budget, because I understand the Finance Committee didn't count those numbers, so I want to make sure we all did.
All right, so the Chamber requires further discussion. Is there any other that requires further discussion from...
I'm, I'm, I'm not happy on the reflection of the Resources Center.
The Resource Center would like to discuss further?
Yes, sir. They got five out of five.
Any others?
I have a technical...
The Temple Gardens? All right. So are there any other that do not have a general consensus here? Does it require further discussion on the town?
No, and I'm, I'm happy to do...
No, and I'm, I'm happy to give the two big ones, if you want to go that way. Quite the reverse order of what we did with the committee.
Well, the reverse order is I'm, I, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to, um, approve the fund, the, um, all the items not here explicitly selected. So everything except the Chamber, Botanical Gardens, and Community Resource Center.
I'll second that.
My, my only issue with that, who everybody knows, is the Chamber Christmas Committee only asked for nine hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Yes.
The committee ended up giving them two thousand four hundred and three dollars. Botanical Gardens asked for five thousand, they got zero. So one of the things I would propose is to reduce the Christmas Committee and give at least some of that to Botanical Gardens. So that's the only fly in the way you want to do it.
Okay. Um, well, I can move that one out as well and consider it with the rest. So then I will entertain a motion to accept all as recommended by the Finance Committee, with the exception of Chamber Christmas Committee, Dunsmere Botanical Gardens, Dunsmere Community Resource Center, and the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second it.
If you could get a big motion.
Well, I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve everything except...
Except the forest state.
The forest state.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of, because of money, uh, councilmember?
Aye.
No, we'll call.
Councilmember, President?
Oh. Aye.
Councilmember, right?
Aye.
And Councilmember, Brian, also, uh, motion carries four, zero, with one, absent.
All right. I've always used the word call it, we'll call.
Well, it's okay.
Well, I just never had a mayor call it, but that's always just, uh, one of the issues. I'll second.
So, um, would we like to entertain the Dunsmere Botanical Gardens first? Is there more discussion on that?
Well, here's my recollection, and staff or you can correct me. Uh, the Botanical Gardens asked for five thousand dollars, and there was a series of motions where there was no support for five thousand. We went down to four thousand, and eventually we ended up on a split basis with a zero. I think the Botanical Gardens is an asset to the city. I think they're an asset on par with Christmas decorations and any number of our community events. Uh, Mike Rodriguez actually made a bit of a pitch for how much city park and the gardens attract weddings, overnight visitors, restaurant visits. Um, we know that, like every other nonprofit, they've been struggling to stay afloat. They have one paid position, that's their gardener or botanist, Ernie Lawson. But I would like to try again at least at the twenty-five hundred dollar level, and if there's no support, there's no support. So I would move to increase them from a zero to twenty-five hundred dollars.
All right. I'd also like to help with the context of that. They are not a consistent applicant in this process. The money requested was for a one-time project to put solar lights and to help build the ramp. Uh, they need a ramp up there so there's more access. Um, this is part of a bigger, bigger budget. I believe the total is about fifty thousand, if I remember the presentation, for what they're doing. And the absence of these funds, the argument was by some members of the Finance Committee, wouldn't permanently alter it given the city's deficit right now. So that was the context of the committee proposal.
On, on that note, what do we do with the Christmas committee?
Well, here again, uh, Chairman God Religion, they really, there are how many, twenty or thirty of these historical roof-style lights? And in self-affiliation with the Chamber, Joanne Steele wants to lead an effort to restore these nineteen fifty vintage Christmas decorations with lights and new green frisys and all. She proposed a three-year program, eight at a time, and the outcome was to let's do all at the same time, which pretty much tripled the request.
Yeah, and, uh, the context for that, to understand, including discussion prior meeting, was that the city is in fact the owner of these wreaths. So it was almost an in-house affair of the city taking care of some, some assets of the town. Would you like to comment or discuss?
These wreaths are, are the property of, are maintained by and installed by the Rotary. Why do I notice this? I put them up every year. I put them up for seven years.
Okay.
I fix them. Um, last year, Joanne Steele, Joanne Steele fluffed them up and made them look good. But if there's two that need to be welded down at the twenty-fourth, um, I can get welded for, like, a fall back here. I don't need, and the only reason why I'm saying anything here, Christmas Committee, is because I, what is, I, I, I actually have to keep toward, I, I have these in my possession. I take care of them. I get old fluffing them. I don't need this much money to fix them up. They ain't that bad. Now, I don't know, we were talking a year, I heard, multi-year project, but honestly, man, a couple hundred bucks, you can make these things look good for the next ten, ten, fifteen years, and I'm not just... They're green plastic. It doesn't go over, it doesn't, I just need new rivets.
If, if this is the case, which is disagreeing about the ownership and condition of the wreaths, could we defer this for, heading to staff report?
Well, I, I can take a motion.
But I, I'd like to entertain bringing this up till we have accurate information as to the ownership, because we were presented by the parties involved as they belonged to the city.
So this is not natural state. The city doesn't put them up. The city doesn't maintain them. The city doesn't store them. They are stored in the Rotary Room. They're maintained by the Rotary. They're put up by the Rotary and the family.
Okay, well, that's why I would like to entertain a motion to just get some more information on this. Do we have time before Christmas to...
I'll second that.
If, if that's correct, the Rotary, then we can deal with Rotary, discuss what they'd like to do and how we can help.
Can we hear from, uh, may I ask to request to hear from Ms. Jean, who is, like, the head of the committee? Where is her response here?
I just wanted to tell you, originally, they were, uh, put together by the Lions, but years and years and years and years ago.
Still, yeah, never the city.
Right.
They've never been the city.
Okay. Um, as to their condition, is there any other comments?
They don't need that much money. I'd say, I would have to go with what you're saying.
All right. With any, anyone? I haven't seen them since last Christmas. They seem to be fine, getting a little...
When it comes down to this, I personally can vouch for it. I can also make those things work if I ask.
Okay. Would that's a motion to adjust?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to take the money that was requested originally from the Botanical Gardens, the twenty-five hundred dollars, and grant them that.
They, they actually asked for five.
So you did ask for five?
This would be a fifty percent haircut.
Well, we're dealing with fifty percent haircut, but you were right. I got married in that. And I know a lot of people that come to Dunsmere just to get married. These people come here just to look at flowers. I'm not into flowers. But they do. So I know it plays an important part of our city, so I would have to be supportive of that.
All right, so two motions on the table. One is to, um, reduce the Chamber Christmas Committee's, um, money to zero and to increase, second motion, to increase the Botanical Gardens to twenty-five hundred. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember, President?
Oh, yes.
All right.
In fact, yes, with the understanding, to keep faith with the community, and this is going to come up with the Chamber, we need more information. What's the city's role? What's the Chamber's role? What's the service club's role?
Okay.
Everybody loves the decorations.
Well, all right. And I myself also vote aye. Um, I do believe that the Botanical Gardens is a real treasure within all of Siski County. It might be the very finest park. Um, I greatly appreciate the volunteers who think that possible and give us her encouragement. Um, with the Christmas Committee, could we direct staff to get us some information on technically the condition, I mean, we have a lot of people here, and ownership of the set wreaths? All right. Can we move on to the Community Resource Center?
And Mr. Presiding Officer, I recuse myself at the committee level. I will recuse myself again.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Well, I have a question, and I have a question. Um, I'm on the Board Directors of Assistant Community Resource Collaborative. I don't know if that could be, and I'm all trying to make this all work, so I'm supporting the Resource Center.
Well, if that's the case, then, um, why don't we defer this topic until next week?
Do you have more financial interest in it anyway?
No, whatsoever.
Where's Peter is the...
That's right. That's why you're that way. Okay, now I'll, I'll go back to your question.
Then we can consider it. I mean, clearly without full consensus of us three, it would be deferred until next week.
I thought we asked for five, that way.
Uh, they asked for fifteen initially, five, five, and five, and five different programs. And to their credit, and I'd very much like to commend this organization, before, if it came before us, they had secured funding for five of it, so they weren't asking again. I, I joke with the captain organization, they are looking for funds everywhere, and they're lying on us. They've never received funds from us before, as was stated before. Um, so they were asking for a total of ten different programs, and the Finance Committee, mostly in light of the constraints of our general funding.
If, if I may, there was a application for five thousand, five thousand for two programs that they got funded from a different source, so they withdrew those two applications, leaving two new applications for five thousand each. The Finance Committee recommended this amount, and it was, they put, whichever program is out of the shop.
But the rationale from Finance Committee level on the, um, haircut, as we've been commenting, was that, you know, Dunsmere deficit is somewhere between, you know, seventeen and twenty-five, twenty-six thousand with the current adopted budget without any of these funds being allocated. When we continue the ones we just did, that pushes it up to eighty thousand, which would be going well, all the way up to a hundred thousand or so here in deficit. In light of that, they have never received funds from us before. It's uncertain whether we'll be in a position to give them funds next year. We do want to support them and the direct work that they do, is the argument that was made. Um, but that, what was applicable for Dunsmere at this time was, was, was the argument before them.
We're talking about the mission, sir.
Yes.
No, no, no.
Yes.
I understand, Bob. We have a deficit and everything. This is the Resource Center. The Resource Center, I believe both Resource Center and Chamber of Commerce are big reflections of Dunsmere. One of them is, what do we got going on in Dunsmere? And another one is, how do I take care of my people? I happen to know there's a lot of behind scenes that they do for veterans. And honestly, we're very lucky that they do what they do for some of these veterans, because our whole lives might be a little different. I think that five thousand dollars... I don't think it's enough. I think that if we gave them a little more and allowed them to do a little bit more of the ideas that they got, the programs that they're seeking, if there was any way that we could bump up that number, I'd be for that. I don't know what they asked for, but I watched that man get up there and say, what you give is a reflection, excuse me, of the support from the city. This is my Resource Center. I actually, when Cindy Foreman ran that Resource Center, I had to go there, never met her. My son showed up at my doorstep with five kids, and I didn't have any money, I just had an operation. And it was the Resource Center that helped me get close for them kids so they could go to school, food, pay my power bill, or my heater, kerosene, so they didn't freeze. I was down and out. I was in no condition to accept six family members. Here we are! But it was that Resource Center. So to me, it's personal, right? They, they help me, they help people every day. They feed community picklings. They, little things like who's the oldest living? Dunsmere, Dunsmere. I mean, that's one organization that's all about us. I think us could be a little more supportive. That's just why I pay them. Um, and if they had a little bit more money, I'm sure they could do some grandioser things this year. I'd really be looking forward to it. So I would make a motion.
Still discussion here? Last, your men?
No, I, I wanted to, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I look at this is that, uh, we took one hell of a hit last year. And, uh, I know that it's our responsibility to be financially, um, careful, but I think that right now, the, the two of the organizations that, that we need the most right now, with all the struggles that the community is going through, are the Resource Center to help those people who are struggling, and on the other hand, the Chamber to, uh, make sure that we get out of this financially. Both of those, in my mind, are the same kind of concept. They're the, the way that we get out of this is by, on one hand, keeping our people supported and, and healthy as we can make them, and on the other hand, by, uh, making sure that we have a group of people that can put on events and bring money into town in all the various places where people spend it when they come to town.
I just mean, that's perfect.
And, and I really do feel that, that, uh, there are times when deficit spending is appropriate, and, uh, I feel this is one of those times. And, uh, I wouldn't want to do it another time, and I've even offered up the idea that we could take a loan from one of our, uh, other accounts with interest and pay it back. But either way, um, I know that this community right now is, is worn out. Uh, we're going to be making an effort going forward to try and, and, uh, bring together the old and the new and, and come up with a, a community stronger. But right now, um, the same people have been putting on the same things for the last, however many years, and it's almost at the breaking point. You know, I, I think that there are enough people that are frustrated and burned out and, and all of that, and if, and if we don't tend to the soul of the city, I think we're going to lose a lot. So that's my, my thought, and so I, I would welcome that motion made or would have made.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend that five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Discussion of motion, attend.
I've said my piece. How about you, Mr. Mayor? How about you?
It's difficult.
I know, I can understand that.
Um, I appreciate the Community Resource Center, because of all the things, all the applicants here, this is the most direct spending money on our citizens for our citizens. Um, it's, it's a very vital way. It's like an RV straight into our city, giving it vital nutrients and fluids. I, I'm a high percent of that. However, I also look at how they've been able to withstand, fund themselves without any assistance from the city. And that's a wonderful thing. I know a large portion of their funding is from Siski County, and Siski County, in this past year, has kind of been posturing that cities need to take on a responsibility for the Resource Center. We cannot afford, I mean, it is a financial impossibility for us to take on what it costs to operate that Resource Center. County collects taxes, and they give us only a small portion of the property taxes for our city, that's how the laws work. They have a mandate for, um, providing these sort of resources, and I'm wary of the movement from a county being responsible for these things to the city because it will bankrupt us. We can't afford a lot of enforcement at the same levels. So, you know, I'm, I'm all for spending any money we have, including our savings, on our citizens now, but I'm very concerned about the future, and I would hate for any organization to depend upon us for amounts like ten thousand dollars a year, because we, we will struggle to pay our bills if we cannot find new sources of revenue in the next year to two years. So that, that's kind of, I guess, things I would remind you guys.
Certainly. I, I...
At the end of the meeting, I want to make a motion or a recommendation that we ask them a count, a foundation, or a board foundation, or someone, to come in and take a look at these entities and see if there's a way that they can advise or help us to make them more self-sufficient, or to chill back.
Well, this, this goes back to the heart of this issue. This is not an application to fund a current program. This is an application to receive funds to expand... funds to expand programs and make it better, which is excellent, but I would hate to expand to something that we couldn't support next year. So that's why my position was that five thousand is the equitable being for this. I would be comfortable extending it to ten, but you'd very well could be nothing next year, I mean, on Dunsborough's finances.
Does everyone there understand that?
Everybody understands. I see a nodding of the head in the audience about this.
So, that will follow, Councilor Dodge?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Motion carries. Can you advise this?
Doing business with the new city manager.
All right. Already started.
Already started.
All right. So, if you want to inform the council, what happened?
We have increased the amount to ten thousand.
For the resource center?
The resource center. I express my gratitude to the council and the public.
So, I guess for the final items of the evening, we'll consider the chamber, they requested fifteen, and the finance committee, mostly due to uncertainties with structure within the chamber, and where exactly funds would go, and what all the sources and budget of the chamber were. I know we received a budget just now.
Yeah, the guys made a decision without us.
Well, they did, they did.
So I got a hold of Richard and Richard put this together.
But that was the recommendation. I would like to say also to the finance committee, everyone there, all five members expressed intent to support for a chamber being a vibrant instrument within the community, and the role it can play. But everyone also had some hesitation as to what role it was playing and direction, and that was why, given our constraints on funds right now, they felt more comfortable approving something less than the full requested amount. I don't know if there are further questions right now?
Of course, yes.
Well, I think in terms of background, and Treasurer, Treasurer Lino is no longer in the room, but it is true, when Mario and I were on the council twelve years ago, we cut the chamber back to just about zero. And he shall reap as he shall sow, we've had a difficult economic period, so the chair of the finance committee is exactly right. The disturbing thing to me, when you look at the budget, so we've got steam pump expenses seventy-five hundred dollars. You've just got money somewhere else for steam pump. I think there needs to be a confidence building exercise, especially because the city unanimously discovered Siskiyou, six thousand a year, five years, and the question was asked, what does Dunsborough get out of that? But what I heard in the presentation of finance committee is our chamber has the ability to go to opportunity Siskiyou and get grants.
That really hasn't been transpiring, been turned down? They've gone to it, they've been turned down?
Well, this is what we heard in the committee.
Are you a member of the chamber?
I'm the lead on for the council, so that's why I'm representing, getting a deal with the budget and everything.
It's ironic to me that we're promoting a group nowhere near Dunsborough and shorting the chamber to represent our interests, that's my only comment.
So, I just want to point out that we do have a budget, this is put together by Mr. Dinges, just to let you know, he's still very active in making sure that it happens, and he's working along with city and all of us to try and make sure that we do this. What we see here is, is that most of the events that we put on, we get about the same amount back. And what that basically means is that what we're doing is we're priming the pump for the businesses about, and it's giving them the money. And right now, we can't afford to pay an executive director, we're having trouble paying the bills, and we're getting ready to put on this steam pump with the idea that we hope this is going to be a big star and a constellation going forward. I want to point out that, two things. Number one, I think that ultimately, this should come under a different category than community development. I believe it should come under a category that's part of the budget going forward, and that budget looks at economic development. You know, what cities do things for economic development, they give out tax rebates and things like that. And what we're looking at here is an organization that, you talk about it being a chamber, it's really more business center than it is a chamber. The things that go on that have to do with maintaining the chamber as it is, is minimal compared to the amount of time that is spent working on getting advertising, getting the people together to put on the events, doing all those things that make these events happen. And when I say that we're in a process right now of burning our people out, it's because we're at the point right now where we're saying, well, we don't even have the money to get to the next step. So if we do have money for this steam pump, I'm going to go out and do a happy dance when we leave tonight. But the bottom line is, I believe from my research, that Mount Chaffs gives their chamber about forty thousand dollars a year, and I believe that we give their chamber about fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. And I believe that also both of them, although they won't tell you exactly how much their TOT is, that they have a percentage of TOT that they get. And that is what Supervisor Alan Swale has been passionate about, we is saying, why don't we have that? Why don't we have it so that there's a tying of the support that goes out to develop our economy, to support our economy? And that's why I'm saying that right now, of all times, if you want to have a vibrant chamber of commerce, they have a budget. The budget, I think if you look at it, you'll see that it's, there's no inflation anywhere, it's just how you put on, all the events you put on, and as far as the chamber side and paying for the director, that's handled through rentals in large part from the billboards out there. But I am passionate about the idea that if we're going to move forward, if we're going to recover as a city, if we're going to bring more people, then we need to support the chamber right now more than any other time. And I know that we have a new city manager coming on board, he'll probably have all kinds of ideas on how to strengthen that, we've got people like Sidney coming forward, and we've got people like Mr. Clark, I've been around a long time, but now is the time, so I really hope that we can put in the extra five, because you look at the budget, that's what it was based on, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Dugges?
I would echo the extra five. The city is up there says, you know, she got, she got no, she got no cow in the field, she got no, you know, she, she don't got, she's just somebody that cares. And I see that there's a new wave of passion, and things are starting to spark. And I really truly believe that we would not be sorry that this would be a vibrant move for our chamber conference, so I would agree with the extra five thousand dollars.
Thank you. I'll turn to the motion, if you want to second it.
I have a comment.
Part of the discussion, I'd like to share.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that under this budget that we now have before us, the city, including the ten recommended from the finance committee, is already subsidizing thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars to the chamber. The chamber dues, business dues, and individual members holds four thousand, two hundred and fifty. I'm aware that we're a small town, and being a business owner here is a difficult thing to be, and we can't afford a lot, but I'm concerned about a structural problem within the chamber, where the chamber receives so many funds from the city that the expression of its members might be muted, because, you know, what a city council takes, because thirty-five thousand dollars relies on the city council might outweigh the grassroots involvement of the businesses within the chamber.
Worse than thirty-five?
Yes, the billboard leases are land that the city owns, assets that the city owns, that has given the chamber to manage for a steady stream of income. A long time ago, the chamber didn't have a steady stream of income, is what I've been told, so they were handing out these billboards to manage, to secure a steady stream of income, and they've been doing quite well with them.
One of those businesses that hasn't paid for years.
You know, it's not that, it was a good effort to have a stable source of income coming in each year for the chamber, but I'm just pointing out that that is a city asset and resource that is already devoted to the chamber. They also have a minimal rent of city property, and it should be that way, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that, but that it's heavily subsidized by the city, and that, I know that last summer, you know, really brings us to a point because of the great misfortune of having the council roof us twice, but I'd be more comfortable moving maybe to a model for the time being of having the chamber apply the city council for money for getting their events, so that this is more directly lined up with a particular, particular cost, because the costs are diverse, and we don't know whether we're paying for employment, whether we're paying for our own minimal rent, you know.
I asked, I asked Richard to come up with a way of delineating that, and he said, how do you break up my time, you know, I have to, if I make a phone call coming from one place, do I do that? Really what we're talking about here is, we're not talking about giving money to the chamber, we're talking about economic development. That's what we're saying, we want businesses to come in, and rather than try and, we used to have the council giving money to individual events, but that got down to the litigating level. And I'm saying that right now, they have a vision of what they think that they can do to move us out of this spot, and if we say we don't want to give them the extra five thousand, then we won't get an executive director, and we won't get other things that we want to get, we won't have the money to put on an event, it's crunch time. I mean, the reason that Richard is not here right now is because we cannot even afford to pay him thirty hundred dollars whatever we owe. That's the position we're in, and when we start getting going forward from here, we're going to have costs that are associated with advertising, and putting things out ahead of time, and buying this and buying that. That's where we're in the middle. If you want to, you know, say, let's not give them five, let's figure out if they can handle it without, the way they're going to handle it is by doing less. And the stress is going to be more on them, the people that are still going to be volunteering and step forward. That's the position that chamber is in right now. And I know that from having been in the county for a while now, for four years now, I know that all these organizations go through periods of time where there's a crisis in confidence, where people make mistakes, and there are bad feelings and attitudes. If we want to turn this around right now, now's the time to do it, now's the time to say, okay, whoever's stepping forward right now, and wants to put in the passion and the hours and the energy to make this a better city, let's support them. That's what this moment is about.
And your council would support that. Well, you know, our walk is kind of a recent addition, and that highlights some of the confusion around the chamber's involvement as the leader of events within the town. But no one on the city council, as far as I know, is disagreeing with the need for economic development, and a need for many events to draw tourists and entertain our locals within the town. It's whether the chamber is the most effective vehicle for doing that, or instrument for doing that, that we're considering here. And this is more of an academic discussion, I'm not suggesting that they are not the best instrument, but in subsidizing them to the tune of at least thirty-five, thirty-four thousand, six hundred, and possibly another five thousand on top of that, I'm just, for one, very curious to what extent they are the best instrument for that, or how they can be encouraged or helped, maybe in ways that aren't directly financial, because I don't want to get into a situation where we're giving more and more money each year, where next year we need twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, where we're not dealing with maybe some more fundamental problems here with funding sources.
Like I said before, the thing I really want to do going forward is to start the budgeting process and saying, we should have money for economic development. And the reason that fifteen thousand right now is such an important number to me is because all along, we've been talking about what would be a good percentage of TOT, because a lot of cities base the amount they give the chamber on the amount of TOT. You get a lot of people in for beds, then you can get more, and that's the way you kind of build. So the TOT, I believe, for Mount Chaffs is around four hundred thousand, and we're at one fifty right now. And that doesn't mean that we don't have the beds, we don't have the people in the town right now to put them in there. So what I'm proposing, and have been thinking for a long time, is to come up with a percentage, ten percent of TOT. And then if we do that going forward, and we can make a policy through the finance committee, if we do that going forward, then it's not a matter of escalating, and we're not subsidized, and all we're doing is coming up with a philosophy that we're going to support a lot of it there. And ten percent of one fifty thousand is fifteen thousand.
I would be more comfortable in the current environment with what we're learning about the chamber, and I definitely want to support them, but having them come to us for the events that they have planned, that they're ready to go on, and if they've been able to raise, you know, a certain number of funds, perhaps we could develop a matching grant program for events within the town, because directly spending on economic advancement and prosperity works quite well, but to take money away from the city that does not have very many funds, and to give it to another organization that we do not know is being run competently for, I think they have that, I mean, that's the reason I've done as the official liaison, avoid all their meetings, is because representing the council, I've been watching and seeing, and yeah, there are some problems, but to be honest with you, that five thousand to me represents Richard Dinges. Look at the five thousand.
We got a bike, we need to put some air in the tires, so it can roll a little bit better, a little bit faster, that's the way I see it. Ten thousand, if we give them fifteen thousand dollars, are they going to be at least armed with enough to, you know, to take charge and do some of the things they want to go? He's right, we lost Richard Dinges, and Richard's still helping us out, but...
The loss of Richard Dinges is a point of concern for the organization's ability to navigate, to navigate their financial situation going forward, and the city supplying the difference.
It's not supplying the difference, Mr. Mayor, it's the idea that what percentage of money do you want to put forward towards bringing people to the town? That's the question, because right now, we're on that point, how much do you think is important to advertise, to go out on market, to go to different conventions, to do all the things that our executive director is doing all those times? Now nobody's doing that.
And they carry the insurance for every event.
So again, it's not that we're trying to, you know, are they subsidizing when they get forty-seven thousand and we? What they're recognizing is, is that that money comes back in terms of economic development. I'm trying to get this away from just being community development, it's not community, it's economic development.
Well, they also have businesses, we, that perhaps support their chamber to a higher level as well. The chamber should be a grassroots business organization. A new business in town should change the nature of the chamber slowly over time, as they get involved, and it always is, within the organization. So I don't know that that's not the case, Dunsborough, I'm not privy to that information, but with the absence of the executive director, rather suddenly this year, it certainly gives one on the outside some concern.
Yeah, and that's why we say we can get rid of that concern by solving a problem. If the problem popped up, and now we don't have that asset, do we want to have that asset? Sure we do. How do we do that? We give them the money they want. If we don't do that, we won't get an executive director.
Mr. R.
Well, the letter we received from Luanne points out that chamber has a debt of thousands of dollars, roughly twelve thousand. So if we allocate fifteen thousand dollars to the chamber, the twelve thousand of those fifteen yearly payoffs are debt, is that what's going to happen?
The budget is here, I don't know, I'm just looking at the budget.
Yeah, we press the debt relief.
There's a huge point made, we have no executive director, and we're in debt, we're in debt, twelve thousand dollars. So it's, with the budget they put forward for these events, will we be funding those events respectively, or just paying off the debt to the chamber?
This is based on going forward, and I think that, I don't have an answer, but...
Yeah, the debt is of some concern, because...
What's the choice? Do we just want to say the heck with the chamber?
No, 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 I think it's the point that the chair, the finance committee made, the business community needs to step up as much, if not more, than the taxpayers of the city.
I agree.
What is business?
You know, I know that I look at weed, and I say, you know, we have some executive director that are paying the chamber, you know, forty-seven thousand dollars a year, and, okay, we'll, this is give them ten, and we'll figure out when they make it from there. And make a piece of the T of team.
Well, I would like to include, whatever we do, the director to maybe look further in, that I would better structure vital oxygen to the chamber, if that's the situation they're in. You know, my instincts go towards knowing that I spend money on, not on relief of debt that I have no control over the incurred note, but we need here for the community, work all this year, roof us, we need funds for that, we can help you get off the ground for these events, because we know we're, we know we're spending Dunsborough's taxpayer dollars, so I'd be more comfortable with some structure of that, with maybe ten thousand now, to revisit that structure, but we already have the twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars that was intended to be a steady stream of funds to the chamber, and, you know, I don't know if there's been a lot of oversight towards the direct usage of that, not that it's our place so much, other than the fact that we're spending Dunsborough's both taxpayer dollars and assets commonly owned by the citizens on the chamber, which is appropriate, but when the chamber doesn't function the way it ought to... But when the Chamber doesn't function in a way not to, as things occurred this summer, the question is to be useful to them. So if you guys are comfortable entertaining a motion for net housing with the Directive, to maybe have the Finance Committee look into how we can better structure, or another committee perhaps, economic development, point out.
My sense, they want to move with fifteen, so either way it's like, I'm happy to move the ten if they don't want to put it in.
Will the Chair will now entertain motions?
I'll move fifteen.
There's a motion to amend to fifteen, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. A full call though?
Aye.
Is there a motion? Or Kai Smith?
Aye.
That's number Art?
No.
That's number Ryan?
No.
So we'll save that for our next meeting?
Two-two, so we'll save that for the next meeting.
Cool.
And in saying no, this is not my part, I do not intend to not support the Chamber, it's just, if they need money tomorrow, let us know, and we can deal with that sooner than the next meeting perhaps. But we have two weeks, you can get a fully approval at the next meeting. The year is split up into many different months, and your needs seem to be coming at different times here. If there's a direct need, let us know about that, but we just better, it's far better to resolve this issue and have a better understanding, considering our subsidization of the Chamber.
I just would like to clarify, subsidization of the Chamber makes it sound like they're somehow, you know, poor and need support.
It's natural for a city to spend money on the Chamber of Economic Development, I totally agree. But I was just pointing out that this is not a rejection of it, we just need more information, and we'd like to come to a point where the relationship between the Chamber and the city is well-known, and justified, and the understanding of how much money we spend is a joy, not a cost or concern.
Just to clarify, there was a motion for fifteen thousand, failed, we have a two-two. At this moment in time, we have no motion for any funding for the Chamber?
No motion for any money for the Chamber.
Why?
Well, I'm happy to move the ten, if you want to do the ten, and put it back on the agenda for the twenty fifteen.
And we set it together?
Okay, I'll follow that.
All right, so there's a motion, fund at the recommended amount of ten thousand. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Full call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. And we'd also like to direct staff to place this item on the agenda for further review. And with it, some exploration of options for how we could structure funding for events versus...
I would rather prefer that we go down the idea of a percentage of T O T. I think that is the way other cities deal with it, and I think that we can make it more self-sufficient.
Even if it takes several months, I'd like to kind of resolve how we'd like to structure this, and engage with our partners at the Chamber.
I think it's new City Managers, or that, so, all right, at this moment in time, I think what we need is a motion to approve seventy-five thousand, five hundred in community promotions funding for two thousand nineteen.
Could you also bring out what the deficit amount would be?
The deficit amount would be that amount, plus about thirty thousand more in the budget line.
Relative to...
That number, probably.
Can we confirm the Treasurer's estimation that our total general fund reserves is estimated at three hundred and sixty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, so that being the whole situation we're both hearing here? Full call though?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. There was a motion carries for zero, one absent.
But before we do decide, so everybody understands, especially Todd, there is a linkage between raising the level of this tax to a higher percentage, and looking on a go-forward basis to doing more community funding. We do have a timeline, in other words, to make all of this work, we need to work with the Board of Equalization and Accounting to make sure we are on track to process what we hope the community will support, which is a tax implement to raise all those. And I, you know, the handoff, I'm reading other cities that are already aligning themselves to make sure they get on the right ballot at the right time, without a special election.
All right, take it to the Council.
I would, I'd like to see staff come back to us, maybe, I don't know, can staff do or reach out to the Account Foundation, or to someone out there where we can get a grant, come in here and take a look at our Resource Center, at our Chamber, and see if they can come up with ways to make these entities more self-sufficient.
I think you work for other cities. Let's see, what's, for instance, the Resource Center has a collaborative above it, the Siskiyou County Resource, Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborate, I'm a member of the Board, and so they are the ones that oversee and look at all the various operations, and whether they're making money or not. So that's why I was so passionate about making sure they have the money they ask for, because I'm tuned into, and I know Mr. Art is as well.
And with the amount of rent for twelve thousand was homegrown, we needed the infrastructure of the water grid out, but to Big Dave's point, yes, we need to go after grant opportunities in the city.
Last thing was, you see what they do, because you're on the Board, you see what they do because you're like Dad of the building, right? He's on the advisory committee, right? Yes. I see what they do for the people. I mean, I'm in one of the streets, I actually see it, so that's why I hold my passions for, I commend everything you guys are doing, keep it up, you know? I've got your back, so I want to do all I can.
All right, now we'll move on to consideration of future agenda items.
I'm still, do we have an agenda in the new committee for protocol?
This has been, I would say, to the best of my knowledge, I would not have a functioning committee for that review, but I intend on implementing one in the near future, especially with our new City Manager, that we can establish a certain norm.
In the interest of time, I'm going to wait on my items. I'm still very much concerned about the vision, planning exercise that I've got scheduled for a future agenda item. The airport is still a hole in our budget.
It's one percent of the budget.
But we need, how much general fund support are you going to need in nineteen-twenty?
How often do you bring up other one percents of the budget?
I'm just saying, we can't really define our deficit and manage the budget till we know.
Well, I'm looking at new information on the airport coming in daily, because we're all briefed on that, so we'll really revisit the airport in the future, whether we'd like to or not. Any other?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about, there was a gentleman here that said about, he wanted to go up getting a permit, temporary permit, if any of us, is there any way we can make that happen?
Well, it's all that works with what Randy allows.
What is permit, you're saying a temporary permit?
First of all, normally the council wouldn't direct the City Manager to issue a permit. That's, that's if the City Manager permits. Second to that, I did meet with the Attorney today and tell him I would issue that permit.
Why would he ever ask me? That's, etc.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, he and I are not always communicating on that.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that, because you, would you like to still have, just an update on the canvas?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that with the new City Manager, it takes some time, but system, I'm sure that we have the next agenda served.
Agenda. At the next meeting, we request that we have on before council's consideration approval to amend the classification plan, to add a grade-three chief plant operator to the Waisler Treeville Plant, and also to approve the job description authorization for community services liaison code enforcement officer.
Could you, Mr. City Manager, while you're still City Manager, could you clarify that code enforcement officer will also deal with dogs?
Oh, that's, that's part of what's going to be on the agenda.
I'm trying to figure out a nice way of saying that without being funny. Yes, this is yes.
Any other?
Well, just one more on the cannabis, you have a conflict, but I don't have a conflict as far as the citizens adopted taxing regularly, they're not going to get a dollar of cannabis revenue until we adopted ordinance with the taxation part of it. And whatever we adopted, the mayor said, it's too high, it's not right. So we need to work with Weed and Mount Chastis and our consultant until we have the appropriate ordinance adopted, we don't get any cannabis revenue.
Yeah, I thought it was all about getting some money out of it.
If I may answer that question, what I can't use the question, you adopted a taxing ordinance, and it has a range, low end and high end of what the tax rate may be, and there was an amount to start at, and it was at the top end.
It's adopted.
So if you want it to be lesser, I think it's provision specifically, and that it could be done by resolution, the council doesn't have to be by ordinance. So the question is, do you want that on your next agenda? It's a tough question, because you have nothing to tax at the moment, so it's probably a more appropriate question, as you get down the road, you get a chance for your new City Manager to fight out that speeder center with the other agencies that are doing it.
So we do our review, thank you.
Well, yeah, and whether it's a referral to the Finance, we have no more cannabis committee, so it's just, it's not ministerial, it's going to take some cannabis.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Mr. Art Reed has had his lead blow up, so I'd like to give him a moment, like I could see what he has to say before we get to your...
Sorry.
Technically, I can't, I can give you my time.
I'm trying to turn to the Mayor very clear on that.
Okay.
So I'd like, as soon as we adjourn, I'd like to be here, we have a second. All right, the Chair will now entertain a motion for Richard.
A second? A second.
That was the fastest set there.
Well, it's an excellent meeting, we're doing good.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, call the meeting close at eight P M.